My name is Daniel Rosales and on behalf of the District Attorney's Office, I want to welcome you here to our Anthony Town Hall Forum. For those of you that are new to our forum, we want to first thank you for being here. Your presence and some of your shows that you carry in our regard, you're sharing our common goal of making Noguera County a better place to live, work, and raise a family. So, thank you so much for being here. We truly appreciate you taking the time and the time to be here. Before we begin this forum, I want to kindly remind everybody that our office, the Sheriff's Department, and the Department, we cannot talk about open cases. So, keep that in mind. We're prohibited from speaking about cases that are currently open within our office. So, again, out of respect for the victims, out of respect for those that have yet to go to court, we ask you to please refrain from asking any questions with regard to stupid cases. However, we want to let you know on behalf of the District Attorney's Office, and I'm sure of the sheriffs as well, that the office doors are always open. If you have questions, concerns, ideas, our office, our doors are always open. So, please know that. We also have a website that you're welcome to go to, www.noguera county ta. There you can find a lot of our information, you'll find our Facebook, about anything that we're doing such as this in the community, and anything else that's going on within our office that we're engaged in. You have links to the Sheriff's Department, links to Anthony, you have links to many of our brothers and sisters in law enforcement, a lot of our community resources are on our website. So, please make your way to our website. We'd love to see you participate in that way as well. Okay, welcome in, good team. A lot of people were asking, as we were sending out the fires and participating in the community, asking people to come here today. What is it about, what argument is here, what's going on? Usually it's because there's something major going down, or because it's a election day. I think it's important to understand that we're here because we care. We're here because we understand that it's difficult for people to get the bruises a lot of times. It's hard for people, for Hannah, for Hatch, for someone, for everybody to get the bruises and tell us their ideas, tell us their concerns, tell us what's happening within the community. So, therefore, we're here today to speak and to listen and to hear about what's going on in your community and to discuss the situation. You're going to notice kind of a more informal setting today, as you see here today, that was done at the request of our DA. Just wanted to kind of hear you guys and understand about what's going on within your community. So, it's going to be really formal. The only thing we ask is if you have a question or concern, an idea, after we open up the floor, that you please come with a time to respectfully address the, you know, the panel with questions, concerns, and just address the panel so that we can, again, hear what you're saying and know that as well as you will be here. That's the only thing we're asking at this time. Today, we're going to have some opening remarks from our District Attorney, followed by each of our panelists, with just a quick intro and as a reason as to why they're here. And then, without further ado, I'd like to introduce you to our District Attorney Mark from the District Attorney's Office.
Hi, gentlemen, and welcome to Anthony. Thank you very much for being here. Is that a great room? I don't want to look back, but you're here, speech, and everyone who cares. Maybe I have a point, maybe I have a suggestion, maybe I have a problem. I need you to help me do what's right and to serve the purpose. I don't come here to be very much. Do live, work, and claim this community. And maybe more importantly, who creates your family in this community? Your sons, daughters, mothers, fathers, sisters, brothers, cousins. I'm here to help and do whatever I can to make your community a safe and secure town. Well, you and I always agree. No, I make very tough decisions. And one of the factors about being in the DA is you have so much son or daughter being a victim of crime. A lot of times, on the other side of the coin, you have somebody's son, mother, or daughter, father, who's a victim of a crime. No matter what decision I take on cases, something can happen, either I'm heartless or I'm weak and cry, depending on what side you take. I will tell you, folks, I struggle to do what's right. And sometimes, as you know in your own life, sometimes doing what's right is not easy to have to take, it's harder to have to take. Now, basically say, folks, if most parents do the right thing, it's harder than just to must be, or succumbing to public fear. I will tell you also that people often comment to me, "I read about it in the paper," remember that? Folks, for whatever reason, whatever you need to first to say, whatever political agenda our papers have here, Los Cruces and in the San Diego, they have a agenda that they don't like my philosophy or whatever. So, please, when it comes to reading the paper or watching Channel 7 News, believe half of what you see. And that's, and I'm all for a free press, and they're going to see what they want to say, but that's a fact. And I'm a political agenda, it's a shit, too, because, and the last guy with the headlines and stuff, he was not for it. There are two cases recently where a combination of 70 years, we both been able to split that. And we'll make you believe that somehow I can solve my crimes. Those two guys are going to stay in the past, and the other guy's going to keep three years. Does that sound like solved my crimes to you? Don't be weary of the media. I will say, I'm here with Patrick and K. Box. They are always fair, honest, and forth to do this, that's a truthful way. But if you agree with me on that, I would really appreciate that. I want you today to be candid and to be one with me. I can take it, all secretaries can take it. Under Sheriff Lerna, who's the second commander of Sheriff's Office, he can take it, and Nathan Harrow, also a sheriff, can take it. And I want us to go. Let's have the conversation. Let's work together for a solution. If you're opposed, or addressing it. If we can't do it, we're not, we're telling you straight to your face, okay? Because then we can do it now. That's just the way it is. I promise you, I'll be candid and honest with you and everyone here. What I will ask you is candid and honest with me and my colleagues. Are there any questions before we begin? If you feel allowed to take a seat, anyone wants to be ready to go first, which will be working. And please state your name, if you can, or say your first name, that's fine, and tell us what's on your mind. Anybody? Just please come on, sorry, go.
Hello, my name is Victor Malora, former chapter president for the Latin Party, Dr. Anthony. I am also the founder and chairman of the board, the organization, and help to operate Anthony in Mexico. I've worked with sheriff's committees in the past, and go through relationships that is very popular relationships from now. And we have some concerns in regards to those saturation points we were placing in front of the elementary schools. And people are coming up to me and telling me that they had seen parents arrested in the school. We decided to talk to the board chief, and we also have a list of other questions. I engage the community at Anthony Water Sanitation District and an event grocery store. And these are some of the questions that came up as we engage. What happened to the officer who coordinated for a gas in middle school? Some of my youth, when I brought in the first two police, had a huge anxiety. Some of my girls started crying, my male students felt that I'm asking for police. And we knew that on courts, on Marco Street, a lot of these gangs were targeting illegals just by that fact that a lot of our people were afraid of the disconnect with law enforcement. So, we have these gangs targeting some of these illegals, residents in regards to that disconnect in the relationship. So, we've been working on this since about 2010 with different ideas and other offices to build that relationship with the Sheriff's Department. So, my question is, and again, how do we build engagement between the school, police, and community to remove the assumption that the school is not a law enforcement institution, but an educational institution? People are thinking of the school, and police are one in the same. How can we remove this paradigm that the police should bully them? As parents, many times, they're threatened by police, they're beaten, beaten. Second, there are also issues arising from bullying and recruitment of gangs. When gangs target residents, residents, filling the lack of these residents, they have police example, Marco Street. So, the officers from Anthony, guided me to a young man who was one of my former students. He and his mom were fighting against them, and he had told me that the gangs were targeting, and they're pretty sophisticated, look at the same sort of reputation that ties to them. They'll use gang members to use bullying to disenfranchise the youth, and then use the gangs to provide that safety, that love, and that hope that a lot of times the families can't provide or don't know how to provide. And so, he had told me that the S.O.S. gang had people called SOS, not on site. So, now these young kids cannot get out of the gang until the main body gets out of jail. The other thing is, while that he was saying that Nortenios, Tenors, had split into two gangs, that split into Nortenios and Tenors. And Nortenios was trying to connect with MS President. And so, we know that here in Anthony, we have a recruitment at third grade. One of my students had got a school program, told me that he was interested in third grade by Tenors, he jumped into waters. Him and I both wrote to control his neighborhood on Little Street. As he patrol, he was beating up, I guess, he was a sixth grader, beat up a kid to a point where the flesh was on the kid's hands, and he retired in seventh grade. And when I was speaking to this young boy, his name is, his child is gone, I was speaking to him. And so, this is a huge concern for us in the community that these gangs are resisting any kind of community. Second, residents that go to a banana water company want to know what is being done in regards to the abandoned homes, which are being used by residents and gangs in the community. Second, residents would like to speak about the neighborhood watch is established on Fourth Street. And then, in regards to our police, what is the community rotated policing policy and how they implement it? Second, the community would like to see oversight committee set up of people who attend meeting nonprofits, from athletes, engaged, and listen to suggestions, complaints, threats, intimidation from police, if any, that would report to the mayor or to the chief of police. So, for example, we, there was, I was just told today that one of the officers in our police department searched for email, and did not call email to do that search. And those are just allegations. Second, let's see what else. What is the timeline in regards to the conversation with our police, our elected officials, and the community to be able to build this relationship? And as much as we don't like the tension, the tension needs to be placed on the table so that we can resolve that. Because there is, not everything is rainbow and unicorn in regards to some of these issues that we're seeing in Anthony. Then, this is another question from Facebook. They want to know, people want to know if Anthony PD's staff, where did the officers come from, and what called, called fighters who work in Anthony? How are patrols designated? Are patrols placed in Anthony's? How are officers supervised? And are teams going to the board, Anthony Board, on that street or?
Here, so, let me start again, in a second. I have members of the sheriff's office. It sounds like what you're asking for, and I know you can split it different ways, but it looks like you need some sort of commitment, organizational insight into what the case of the Sheriff's Office and the Anthony's, what we're doing for the community, or the doing, how we're doing it, that that's in all sense, right? And I believe that it's completely and 100% accurate and complete. So, I don't think anybody's prepared today to address this, but the sheriff wants to say a few words about that.
I would welcome anybody that has any questions about the department. Unfortunately, that I know of, and I could be wrong, that I know of, we have no source of contact, or source that we can communicate with to let them know that we're going to be doing our project, or any sort of meeting. But we'd like very much to have that. We count out our activities, we're going to have extra activities that are going to be going on. They generally don't primarily expect, and I use the word expect, I'm not saying that anything is seriously wrong, what I'm saying is that we don't primarily interject ourselves within these municipalities unless, number one, we're asked, number two, there's a specific need, number three, there's an urgency that doesn't require this dialogue and communication between different jurisdictions. And when we're going to do that, we'll ask those circumstances, the information on that, we have to do this. And depending on what the information is, that's going to depend on how much information you're going to express versus the community, the whole community. So, I hope that that establishes some kind of starting point that we're going to communicate on. And then, within the meeting, other business partners, we have to give that to you and anybody else here, so we can create that dialogue, we create that commitment to our service. Boy, it gives me, this is a little, I told you earlier, the sheriff, you're one of the very important issues you want to job down, that concern to the community, very, very valid, for gangs, abandoned homes, neighborhood watches, a oversight committee, and protecting or searching, timing for buildings, sense of service, just communication. I'm going to ask you to put, get three or four of these committees, or yourself. I will get them, the sheriff, and we will have a separate meeting, and of course, get them included, and also the Anthony Police. And we're going to sit down, and I'm going to start the process, and discuss it. So, the next, the next two or three things, while I don't have a meeting, I have that here, and to address specifically, I'm sorry, to work on these issues, what, and start to foster a better relationship between law enforcement, the attorney, and the DA dogs, right down to the, down to the street level, this one officer is, his job, the complaints are valid and excessive, and we'll address them. So, behind you is Mary Lydia Bracha, or she'll be here on card, she will still be meeting in Anthony, we'll ask the sheriff's office to attend. Now, you know, obviously, the current chief of police left the division, so we have to work an intro, and if you're in here more, and if you're on the board, we have officers here with me, so we're working on that. So, consider that now.
Thank you. And our staff, we work with Anthony Water Sanitation District, so every month, we can be working out over 3,000 households. I work with the gas and gas companies in districts, we can utilize our mobile phones, gas lines, supplyers. They're working partnerships, they have the trust of the community, we can be the object, so I'm going to help Anthony build that as well.
Here's what, here's what we're pressed for us. It's hard to talk to people inside of your own authority, or about, so if you would be the kind of, to, like you just did today, sustain very well, present the problem to us, if you want a combination of ways, or solutions, if you want to help me, so if you can, you would make three or four trusting people within the area. We got to get Anthony part of that community, because another sheriff is one of his trust representatives, and we'll get to work on that.
One of the things that we did when we saw that disconnect between the relationship with the youth and the community, and the Sheriff's Department, is that every year we've had an officer appreciation cook up. So, the youth, the officer will send the youth out there, they cook the officers, and that really helps build that uniqueness that is, that needs to be built in that relationship. But I have some more issues. My issues with possible behavioral and mental services in Noguera County, for many of our residents to get medication, counseling, and services. There's about maybe 35,000, 45,000 residents that don't have de-vital services for mental behavioral services. So, how are the police trained to deal with people with schizophrenia, bipolar, and veterans with disabilities?
Let me talk to him more time. I have, I have a individual named Rob Marrow, something about an expert, he has got issues. You are suffering with what, that you're suffering in the whole. Our ability to handle pandemic is woefully inaccurate, I mean, yeah, the max, dreadful, unacceptable. And we are trying to address this issue, like even our laws and protection, that, you know, these individuals were self-medicating, and acting, and acting, we're still working on all of that treatment set up in Los Cruces, to try to handle it in there. That's, that's more of a recovery, a community health, except how the police handle that. We're working on training the police, slowly, surely, that's looking at you, and here with this problem.
And one of the things that I want to highlight in regards to Anthony PD, my uncle had a, he was a former Vietnam vet, he had a mental breakdown, and the police officers were able to guide him, and say, "Look, we know who you are, we're veterans," and he wouldn't listen to us, but the help of these men, they were able to get him in proper house, and I really do appreciate it.
That's very, that's very true.
And so, I, you know, these are, these are some issues, and so, as well as, you know, what are the procedures to deal with it, but that's awesome.
Anything, I think that the community and the veterans, you know, the citizens, the police, I would encourage you to have a chat with them. So, I just want to just bring this, we're ready to help these people.
I'm ready, this is an opportunity, we've got the school district ready, we've contacted our state officials, our state senators, very interested in these meetings, so the way we, we can be happy if we go to the championship, and all that, and be part of it.
Well, sorry to know, you're, you're, I think you're a special combination, Jack user.
Just to make you aware, every month, we have a community meeting in Anthony that will be granted to the university. And every now and then, we notice some of the participation of the residents, the management is starting to diminish, and sometimes it will be, we, we're kind of, we're like, we like to compare what Anthony has to say and what their concerns are. The second issue regarding mental health, one of the resources that may be available or that is available, is the health movement services department of Noguera County. This Jimmy Michael, who's the director, is very big on that consideration. And then, the third question that you had is that the state, the management, training for all of our, for some in the city of Mexico for mental health affairs. So, every year, we go through mandatory training regarding that consideration. I just wanted to, for that, just to be aware.
One of my hats for Health Action New Mexico is, I'm a southern facilitator of Health Action New Mexico, I want to think in spite of building here in Anthony, basic cooperative health clinic. And I'm also a former community coordinator for Alvey, New Mexico, one of the few companies that survived the whole healthcare piazza from here in the state. They're interested in coming and as well into Anthony and providing the mental behavioral services that they've contracted to 23 single person aldermen in the community. Because, like we said, if Juanico sees his dad beat up his mom, or if his dad has diagnosed bipolarism, then how do we spread Juanico to study for the part of being in such a condition?
I don't think we're front door, I don't think we're front door. Next week, Frank Lloyd's lawyer is going to be in Los Cruces, talking specifically about, taking questions specifically from people in law enforcement, people on panels on that board, about mental health in Noguera County services, that he has on that. And I would ask that they just be addressed on the court, and they have to, in the law enforcement, that could be, like, such, mental health services. So, I would encourage you to have the meeting, they should be my contact, I think, I know we've talked before, but that way, I, you know, I think it's important that you guys show up, so, I don't think it's happening, there's a whole body of legislators that is pressing specifically mental health issues throughout the state. And one of the things that we here in Noguera County are going to have, a law to build because they put us in a, our rest of care, our home care facility for people that are in the, you know, the suicidal, severely mentally ill, if they're contact law enforcement, they're going to have to, like, say, that's the correct system here in Noguera County that's been grow, and it's, I think, legislators, you know, so, and, and we, I think, is here to support more forums, so.
And you have a support, you have a, and I was helping, you know, I was learning about our officers. And my house is always open, my wife is always making different stuff, my bruises, we just have a couple of coffee for anybody who offers, so my home is always open. We need you as much as anybody in Anthony, okay?
Thank you very much. Did anybody still listen to Paul Harvey, his commentary? We had, we had, anyway, Paul Harvey was a commentator, and he always tells a story, and then he can say, "Now, let me tell you the rest of the story, like, behind the scenes." Let me give you some insight into behind the scenes. And Major, I'm sure, or, or, or too humble to tell you this, but I'll tell you this. I have sat there with Kiki Vida, I would be like a sheriff, and folks have no reason to, 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 to. I don't know, I don't know what to say. He sat down at my desk, and I was six feet away, and he said, "Mark, we're not doing enough for the outlying communities, for the suburbs, for the haps, for the, for not even more." So, you have a sheriff, now, who really, as he cares about doing what's right, and the protection and the cooperation he deserves, and I'm, and I'm, I'm going to my order, within the next year or so, you're going to see drastic difference, drastic difference in the way we serve the department, covers now, covers this part of our end. And if you don't see it, I'm going to tell you, it's a mark, where is it? Sheriff's office, but he really, really cares, and I'd back 100%, okay? Well, hopefully, he'll accept it. Okay, please, go first. If not, start singing a show tune, and you don't like that.
Well, I'm becoming, yeah, in the community of Anthony, yes, sir. And I just want to know, like, where, who signs the warrants out, if it's not so long ago, around March, this year? The police gang, that is, came through with a warrant for intimidation of witnesses. Well, how's it looking? This is a fourth figure, so, so, of course, we're done, I have to go with the first experience.
Is this a, or, is this feasible, thank you?
Oh, no, it's close. And, first, and, and recently, our officer, Ms. Farrell, who serves in the state, and I understand with Ferris, or when they have to present for the state. And so, my bond wasn't reduced, it was $5,000 secured, I'm not sure it was bad, of course. And for being $5,000 out of thin air, or, 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 very tough, and, and pretty tough, it's really tough.